Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of May twenty-third. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of Ireland and to the public, where wishes stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Thomas.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Colton, here. Trustee Willis, here. Trustee Hyferman, here. Trustee Harris Jones, here. Trustee Roman, here. Trust, President Hofeld.
Here. Representing staff this evening, by left, our village manager Napoleon Heaney, to my right, our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience, it's right, our police chief Denise McGrath, finance director Amy Zlowski, economic and community development director Angela Maseris, public works director John Schaefer, and assistant village manager Tyler Hall. The minutes of May ninth, any additions or corrections? Trustee Willis.
None.
Trustee Colton.
None.
Trustee Hyferman.
None.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing.
May I have a moment? Motion to approve the minutes, please.
Come on.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Colton. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list in the amount of five hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. Comments or questions? Trustee Willis.
I have no questions.
Trustee Colton.
None.
Trustee Hyferman.
No questions.
Trustee Harris Jones.
None for me.
Trustee Roman.
That.
May I have a motion to approve the claims list, please?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll, roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The claims list is approved. Of that five hundred, almost five hundred ninety-three thousand dollar claims list, one payment comprises almost half of that. Our payment to the city of Chicago Heights for water was two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, or forty-eight percent of that claims list. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
I'm, oh, gotta go over there.
If you'd like.
Amy Crump, Homewood. Hi, yes, I'm, I'm coming to you to ask you respectfully to consider when letters are sent out to residents about issues concerning their lawn. I have received two this year, and both of them were completely legit. But the problem is that the most recent one was dated May twelfth, which was last, or the Friday before, and I received it on May eighteenth, and it said you have three days. So I don't think the post office is doing as good of a job as it once was, and you may want to consider that. Plus, they're, you know, three days. I, you know, I feel like I'm fortunate enough that it, I can take care of stuff like that, and it was actually taken care of before I got the letter. But if somebody legitimately got that letter and it said, if you don't mow your lawn in three days, the village will mow it for you and we will bill you. Well, what if someone was having a medical emergency or so, or it rained for three days? I mean, I'm sure that the village would take those things into account, but by that time, somebody would have already been billed. You know, especially since I didn't get it till the following Thursday, and it said you have three days, which would have been the previous Monday. So not only from the standpoint of the post office service, which is going very slow, but also I would think that there are people who are not as fortunate as I am to be able to respond as quickly as those letters say. Three days is really not very much time. So that's all I had to ask for was to reconsider the length of time you give people, residents, to respond.
Mr. Heaney's taken note of it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? If not, at this time, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of either Elizabeth or Liz Smith to the Appearance Commission?
Come on.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Colton. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Please come up to be sworn in.
Hi, Elizabeth. Having been appointed to, having been appointed to the Appearance Commission, the Appearance Commission, or the Village of Homewood, the Village of Public, you solemnly swear, do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Illinois, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the municipal ordinances for Homewood, and municipal ordinances of Homewood, and I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully, faithfully discharge my duties on the Appearance Commission, my duties on the Appearance Commission to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
We go to Abby.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Presentations. At this time, Mrs. Thomas, would you please read the proclamation supporting Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of Homewood, June second?
Twenty twenty-three proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Village of Homewood to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, Americans are killed, shot, or wounded by gun violence, and whereas Americans are twenty-six times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in one hundred and twenty-seven cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Homewood, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in Homewood is one of the mayor's highest responsibilities, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors, village presidents, and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the COVID-nineteen pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January twenty thirteen, Haida Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June two, twenty twenty-three, to recognize her twenty-sixth birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Haida Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Haida's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June two, the first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June two, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that village president Richard Hofel declares June two, twenty twenty-three to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. He encourages all citizens to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
We have some representatives from the group wearing orange this evening. Thank you for being here. Is there anything you'd like to say further?
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hofeld, Assistant Manager, Trustees, and the public. Would like to say a few words in honor of our group, and those are, those have lost their lives to success gun violence and the victims of violence in general. Evellie. Marjorie Stone Douglas, Highland Park, the names can just go on. This must not happen in Homewood or anywhere else in America. We must value our lives and the lives of our children. We must do more to support those who are fighting this fight to prevent this carnage. So in this regard, we'd like to present ourselves as a group that needs support and assistance in changing the carnage and sense of, sense of violence that's going on in America. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and I encourage everyone to do as I will be doing on Friday, June second, wear orange. Mrs. Thomas, the end of this vote.
Board is asked to waive competitive bidding and approve a contract with Tall Grass Restoration LLC in the amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for post-construction wetland vegetation monitoring and reporting services. The work is being done as part of the village's water delivery project. When the new water lines connecting Homewood to its new water supply source in Chicago Heights was under construction, the route crossed wetlands. The villagers' agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers called for post-construction wetland revegetation. The village solicited proposals from qualified contractors and selected the lowest cost proposal. The board is asked to pass ordinance M twenty-two fifty, amending the business district plan, and the board is asked to pass ordinance M twenty-two fifty-one, amending the business development agreement for Washington Park Plaza, one seven seven four eight to one seven nine five six Halsted Street.
Mr. Heaney, would you care to comment on those items, the latter two?
Absolutely. Mayor, board, residents. So when you typically hear box stores, I just wanted to mention some. Petco, Five Below, Old Navy, Ross, TJ Maxx, Downtown Locker Room, Best Buy, Starbucks, Chili's, Panda Express, Old Navy, Famous Footwear. When you normally hear these types of stores, you think, oh, where am I? You're actually in Washington Park Plaza, as where all of these stores actually reside. So just wanted to read a little bit and kind of bring everybody up to speed on the Washington Park Plaza incentive extension request. Washington Park Plaza, having the address of one seven seven four eight through one seven nine five six Halsted Street, is under the umbrella of the Bytale Group, Brooklyn, New York, formerly known as the Lasada Investment Group. The plaza is a model retail anchor for the Halsted Street corridor and has fared extremely well. The owners have done a stellar job of attracting and retaining top-tier retail and commercial stores that generate sales tax. Homewood currently has a longstanding business development agreement with the owners of the plaza. The business development agreement that has been in place since two thousand and five is set to expire in twenty twenty-four, next year. The Bytale Group requests that the village board consider extending the agreement and the terms of the sales tax sharing agreement for an additional five years with a five million dollar cap. Just want to quickly cover history. So prior to two thousand and five, the Jewel Food Store relocated to the east side of Halsted Street, leaving the, leaving the retail center formerly known, currently known as the Washington Park Plaza vacant. So in August of two thousand and five, the Washington, Washington Park Plaza Partners LLC requested and were approved to receive an economic incentive from the village for the construction and redevelopment of Washington Park Plaza. The incentives consisted of two things, two components, a real estate tax or property tax rebate, and the second thing is a sales tax sharing. All right. Business district. To authorize the incentives, the village established the plaza area as a business district. The original business development agreement was approved and executed by the village and Washington Park Plaza Partners on March eighth of two thousand and five. The incentives, the real ta, real estate tax incentive portion, the initial agreement was amended on August ninth, two thousand and five. The village board approved a ten-year real estate tax rebate incentive, where the village of Homewood, the Homewood-Flossmore Park District, Homewood Elementary School District one fifty-three, Homewood-Flossmore High School District two thirty-three, and the Homewood Library District all agreed to rebate a portion of their increased property taxes for this development to the property owners. The taxing bodies all agreed to participate in this ten-year, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cap property tax refund program. This ran from two thousand and six through twenty sixteen. Amazingly, the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar property tax rebate cap was reached in six years in this ten-year incentive program, effectively ending the property tax incentive portion. So on to the sales tax incentive portion of this agreement. The sales tax sharing component of the incentive is as follows. The village retained the first thirty thousand dollars in sales tax, and the village and the developer will split fifty-fifty the next one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars generated in sales tax. So each, the developer and Homewood will receive sixty-two thousand, five hundred thousand dollars each. Thereafter, the remaining sales tax is held by the village and distributed fifty-fifty to the village and fifty percent, I'm sorry, fifty percent to the village and fifty percent to Washington Park Plaza Partners. The sales tax incentive agreement was approved to operate for fifteen years with a, with a two-point-six-million-dollar cap. So as a combined incentive with the property tax rebate and the sales tax, the real, this incentive was, was effectively kept at three-point-five million dollars. In essence, once the developers received the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in property tax rebates and two-point-six-million dollars in sales tax sharing, the agreement would terminate. So the, the overall three-point-five-million-dollar cap was never reached. Uh, bringing up to a current agreement extension, on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the village approved a second amendment to the agreement that extended the original fifteen-year agreement out three additional years. The sales tax sharing would be extended for three years with a cap of four-point-five million dollars. The three-year extension established the business development agreement as a complete and comprehensive eighteen-year agreement. The developers have been excellent and outstanding property owners. They have also managed to attract well-known retail tenants for over the years. The Bytale Group is in the process now of pursuing financing of critical assets that include the Washington Park Plaza. The plaza owners have made it clear that the incentive extension is critical to successfully refinancing the plaza. The property owners requested that the business development agreement, first executed in two thousand and five, be extended for an additional five years with a five-million-dollar cap. If approved, the business district agreement will have lasted twenty-three years. There are two steps involved in this process. The first, amend the business district plan to allow for increased payout in a longer term. And two, amend the business development agreement between the village and the developer. Once the business district plan is amended, the development agreement with the property owner can be amended.
Couldn't have said it much better. This particular shopping center is the envy of, of every town in the Chicagoland area. It's almost fully rented and it's beautifully maintained. I fully support the ownership's request, and I will support any future requests as quality retailers will be added. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? If not, board comments. Trustee Willis.
Yep.
Trustee Colton.
I've got a couple. Um, specifically, where are we at right now? So you say that by, in the next five years, there's a five-million-dollar cap?
Right.
Where are we at right now?
As far as the...
Yeah, I mean, this is five million over the course of the, whatever points you.
So the extension request is for an additional five years with a cap for five million dollars.
Okay.
For just this five years, the next five years, if this is.
Got it. We're starting at zero.
They've not reached that in the past.
Okay.
They've never reached the gap, so.
Okay. Because I guess my question, my, not, not concerned, because I get that they're a good retailer, and I guess that they're a good part of Homewood. Um, but instead of programs, I think of, instead of programs as being things that you use to get them in, but not to be like ongoing. Like, we don't have this deal with anybody else in town. You know, this whole sort of sales tax sharing deal. Um, I love the model of the property tax, you know, the fact that that was rebated in six years, and that we, we reached it, and we're like done, and now you're here, and now we're partners. Um, what is the looking forward? Is this something that we're, that you, are they going to continue asking for this?
So just to go back real quick there. So sales tax sharing, I get it. While it's not the most ideal incentive, we'd rather tip, right? We'd rather have tip. We would rather have property tax and that tip generate incentive, but unfortunately, there was no tip in the, for the Washington Park Plaza. So we, and, and the fortunate part is we have done, actually, we have two current sales tax sharing agreements right now. We did a fifty-fifty sales tax agreement with Burlington, and we did a declining sales tax sharing agreement with Homewood Ford to relocate them to the, what was it, then?
Hadron.
Hadron, forward. So we've used, we've used sales tax sharing agreements in the past, but these are typically one-off for quality, quality development, like Burlington, Homewood Ford, and Washington Park Plaza.
I can speak to one other sentence of this.
Sure.
The original agreement was for two-point-five million dollars, and then Best Buy came in, and that's why it was amended to three-point-five.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we, when we originally did the agreement, Best Buy was not in the cards yet, so that's where the three-point-five. But if you go back to the original agreement, if you look at how inflation has progressed over time, if you factored in inflation since when we started this agreement, they would actually be at five-point-four million dollars. So this is actually not even keeping up with inflation. The village has set a target for them in terms of sales tax. If it doesn't make it, they're asking to extend that, but really, in, in two thousand and five dollars, this is actually less than what we originally agreed to.
Okay, okay.
One, one other thing, I think you touched on this. Uh, they will be coming to us for additional funding as they fill some of the uses over there. Party City is empty, and there's a possibility of an outlet coin in there, both of which will be quality retailers. They've been talking to them. We're aware of it, and that would add to our sales tax base as well. So that would be a second phase.
Sure. No, and I get that. And one of the things that I really like about that space is that those are, that's one of the best parts of Halsted, you know, in terms of just the level of, it's clean, it's well-maintained, we have good, uh, uh, retailers, it's a good, solid, reliable area. I'm just not crazy about having an ongoing, you know, incentive for someone who's been here for twenty years. Like, after twenty years, they should maybe already made up their mind. Um, so, but at this point, clearly, we just lost, you know, we're not in a position to do anything about it, you know, because we have just recently lost Walmart, and Casino's not here yet. In five years, I may want to revisit this. You know, I may want to take a look and say, all right, does this still make sense for the community? Um, because, you know, we want to make sure that we have quality partners in our retailers and that we have, you know, an equitable outlay of incentives. So.
Yeah.
Trustee Hyferman.
I think it's a win-win. Certainly a win for us. It's a win for the developers. It's a win for the community. It's a win for a school district that don't want to participate in this. Um, that needs, they, matter. Um, and I also think, um, the fact that that property is visibly in terms remarkably well-maintained should be noted for future development that, you know, I would like to have a bit of a philosophy, but I'd like to treat properties well that treat us well. Um, and there we are.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Roman.
I'll just add that when we get requests like this for incentives, I always look at it as I defer to our department heads and our legal, our attorney, because I'm not going to pretend like I know the legal side, the economic development side, or the finance side of stuff like this. And I think we have great people in place for those positions. The one thing that I do know is real estate. And while I'm not in commercial real estate, I do know Cook County and our property tax, um, burden that we have here. And I look at them from, um, what, trying to maintain our residents' property values. So keeping the Halsted Corridor full, in my opinion, helps to keep our property value higher. Um, it help, it helps not only the sales tax, but you can look around at other communities that don't have the, um, stores that we have, and what has happened to their property values. So that's where I come from when I look at something like this. So that's why I tend to always support them, because I think that we need to keep our house by the corridor full.
Thank you. With that said, may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. New business, request for a liquor license from Stony Point Grill, Ms. Ilkowski.
Stony Point Grill has requested a class four A liquor license for their proposed location at twenty thirty-one Bridge Road. A class four A liquor license allows the retail sale of any alcoholic liquor for on-premises consumption only for establishments with a bar. No more than twenty-five percent of the annual gross receipts can be from alcohol sales. The liquor commissioner supports issuing the requested license. Stony Point is beginning the process of building out their space at twenty thirty-one Bridge Road, and if the board is in favor of the request, that will be directed to begin the liquor license application process. After Stony Point successfully completes all of the steps required for obtaining a Village of Homewood liquor license and a permit for outdoor sales, an ordinance to increase the number of allowed class four A liquor licenses and issue a permit for outdoor sales for Stony Point Grill will be presented at a future board meeting for approval. Invite the applicant to come forward to provide any additional information or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Bird, Mr. Flanagan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What was about Stony Point's plans for the restaurant?
Uh, we received our building permit this best Friday, uh, anticipating anticipating opening beginning of October.
Terrific.
Yes.
It's awesome.
So we had the existing facility we're in, um, I was a general contractor at the time, I, I did the build out myself, and we were able to get it open within three months. So now is the push time. So we're hoping to get, open before October first.
And you want outdoor dining as well?
Correct. Yes. I think we're gonna have probably twenty to thirty seats on the outside. The sidewalk is kind of narrow, so we're gonna have, this is gonna be like two, um, two top tables around, around the perimeter on the ridge on Martin Street.
Okay, and not as many televisions that sets as the ones you have in.
No, not at all.
There'll be more, more of a restaurant atmosphere.
We have a lot of petting in there, that's why we have so many.
Good.
A lot of petting in this place. We're, we, I think I have a design, we have, we have twelve TVs.
Okay.
Very good. Comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to this liquor license? If not, trustee Willis. Comments or questions?
Yeah, looking forward to it.
You will.
Trustee Colton.
Oh, I'm excited to see you guys open up.
Thank you.
Trustee Hyferman.
I'm with you.
Trustee Harris.
Looking forward to you operating in our community.
Thank you.
Trustee Roman.
I support your liquor license, and I hate to not be able to watch and have a glass of wine at your new restaurant.
Very good. With all that being said, may I have a motion to direct staff to, uh, to, uh, to prepare an ordinance to bring this liquor license before the village board at a future meeting?
So moved. Second.
Then moved by trustee Roman, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
Get to work.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here. General board discussion. Trustee Willis.
I just want to say I will certainly be wearing my orange, um, the first Friday of June, because for Gun Violence Awareness. Also looking forward to this. Also looking forward to this Saturday because that's when the, the outdoor farmer's market comes back.
Trustee Colton.
Yeah, very excited about the farmer's market.
Uh, my onions are in if you want. My crops are coming in. Trustee Harris. Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones.
Same here. I also will be wearing one.
Trustee Roman.
Same here.
I would like to recognize someone in the audience, uh, Homewood businessman, uh, Mr. West. Joe. I just wanna, I just wanna recognize you. Joe is the owner of the Hibbing Building, and he's had some severe medical issues that he's been dealing with, and hopefully everything is coming along well now.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
We, we support your efforts to develop the retail uses in that building. That's the building on the corner of Hickory and Harwood. So we wish you everything good, particularly in the way of health.
Thank you so much. I'm one of the ones too.
John writes, you wear whatever you, it's okay. With that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Well, thank you. Short recess. Thank you all for being here.
This is the banner.
Yeah.